Morning.
We're being recorded. This meeting is being held via Zoom. And it is, as at our regular September meeting for the PMBC Tuesday because of the holiday as our schedule indicated. So with that, we'll go ahead and start with with a roll call, starting with myself, Steve Justkiewicz, Chair.
Harry Tomisky, Amber.
Wayne Donaldson, Board of Education.
John Marshall, Town Council.
Dan Helslet, ONG.
Steven June, Silver Petroselli.
Corey Moran, ONG Industries.
May unmute myself. All right, with that, we do not have a quorum yet. We'll we'll be able to move through some things even without a forum. We just can't really vote on anything at this point. So looking at the agenda for tonight, the next item we have is approval in minutes, which will postpone. That would be the 10 August minutes since we don't have a form to vote on that. Are there any citizens comments? I'll go ahead and pause for a moment in case there's somebody dialed in. It's not showing up on the screen. Or if anyone wishes to speak in their capacity as a citizen of town. I guess you're technically a resident, not a citizen of later. I'm not sure how that works. All right, hearing nothing, we'll go ahead and move on on the agenda. Next item is informational items. I have no informational items. Lisa, do you have anything to pass on?
I have nothing.
Okay. I will state one or two things informational items. I did attend a meeting of the Town Finance Committee that did discuss the the track and field items, just as an information, because you can read their meeting minutes. Finance did not recommend approval of the use of surplus funds from the track and field project toward defense and scoreboard, a variety of reasons and discussions. I'll let you go through that. I had to do with where the money was coming from and what kind of fence should be put up. They did refer that to Town Council. I believe the Town Council meets tomorrow, and that is on their agenda. All right. And that's all that I have for informational items. All right, moving on to number seven, we have a Linyard School Improvement Project. I went ahead and listed under 7.2 punch list review, a little bit separate from 7.1. So we'll go ahead and Lisa, if you can kind of keep your eye on the meeting of the Zoom and see if Steve Munger happens to pop in. I'm still monitoring for him, and I don't see him. So with that, we'll go ahead and start with Wayne. Wayne, you want to go ahead, pick a school to start with.
Sure, I'll start with Gallup Hill. I'm pleased to report that we've made a lot of progress. Corey has been doing a fantastic job. He's accomplished more in the two or three weeks he's been there than anybody else has accomplished in that same time kind of time period. I have a lot of faith in him finishing up what is needs to be done. The I did email him today with a another ceiling leak, whether it's mechanical or roof, I do not know. So he's working through that. I sent him one last week. He's planning on getting back one day. I don't know exactly when this week, I hope, to check those out and see if he can trace those down. He did go through and change all the ceiling tiles that were stained in the building. Say again.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no problem. I thought you couldn't hear me or something. He did go through and change all the ceiling tiles that were stained in the building. So we do have a reference point. If we're seeing any more, the stains come back and return to those areas, which is good. He cleaned up a lot of the stuff that Chris Rizzi had just kind of glued together, shall we say, instead of correcting properly. I agree pretty much with the two lists that he has open. The one is the warranty list and the one is a punch list. I do have a concern with the warranty list and the fact that we've seen almost very little work at the middle school since we closed the project. So I'm concerned, you know, that we release the punch list and get into warranty list, and then we don't get any help, even though they've promised to stay on the site, finish the lists out. There are a few items which I brought up to Corey that were removed from the punch list that I did not agree with. Some of those, a good portion of those, he's taken care of. There's still a couple hanging that he's not sure if he can deal with or not, depending on his supervisors and his boss. One thing, Corey did hand me a whole package of keys from Gallup Hill. Again, you know, this just goes back to ONG just trying to give answers just to get out of this. I had asked Dan multiple times to get me any keys that were outstanding back. And he assured me that every single key that was they had and was out was returned. And yet Corey comes up with a whole fistful of keys for the building. So that's pretty much all I have on Gallup Hill. He's doing a fantastic job working through things. You know, I'm very pleased with what's going on there since he's been on the project.
Steve, you're muted.
Thank you. Do you have a before we go on, anyone else on Gallup Hill? We'll stay on Gallup Hill for a moment. What is the current number of items that are on the punch list? Do we want to review that punch list? Just go down the items. Also, what is the longest lead item that is on there?
Great, Corey. Well, we're waiting for confirmation on delivery of the replacement doors and hardware. There's, I believe, four doors. I mean, Dan, you can correct me, but there's four doors that are being delivered. Some exterior hardware, a couple pieces of interior hardware, and one light switch that we've been waiting for for about nine weeks. I, you know, reviewed the Wayne location, and we've kind of robbed Peter to pay Paul to keep the classrooms up. And we're waiting for one, one light switch from Ferguson Electric and doors and hardware. Light switch is an unknown. We just keep being told every two weeks now it's not here yet. But we're waiting for confirmation on doors and hardware, I believe, for next week.
So right now, are the lights on or off where the light switch is supposed to be?
The lights are on and they shut off. We have we have switches to turn them on and off.
There was an area that the light switch wasn't really being used, and we pulled that out of there to replace in the classroom.
Okay, and this is a regular light switch?
No, no, these are these digital network lighting switches that you need special programming. I mean, even if you bought one off the shelf, you couldn't use it because it had to be programmed by the controller. It's it's part of the wonderful world of technology.
Well, it's part of the state high performance building standard is actually a better answer for that. You want state money, you got to follow the state rules for how you build things. Understand that. All right. So on the items that what items are not dependent on parts or things that are on order that remain in the Gallup Hill School?
So on the punch list, there are, I believe, seven items.
There are. There are seven open items of the seven. There's, let me just get back towards on my screen.
Seven, you can read them.
What's that?
Seven is a short enough list that we can read them.
There you go. And so just to make sure, I sent out an update to the punch list last week, and then I just sent one out about 30 minutes ago because I realized I didn't copy Lisa when I sent it out about a week ago. So please do look in your emails. You'll find three files. One is the original punch list with everything closed out except for these last seven. And the benefit there, it has some history and it has a little board, a few more notes that you can track some history on them. And then separately, what what Corey and Wayne did was create a list of a separate list in Word that has these seven items on it. And and that's easy, you know, easier to describe. So Corey just spoke to the light switch replacement and the door pull, the door replacements. There are actually three leaves on the way along with some replacement pulls. I'll speak to that because I've been in touch with the door supplier, Park Rowway. So those doors were trying to get here last week before school came, and we were told that they were going to be here this week. Checking to make sure, but I do believe that we are expecting them ahead of what I would like to look ahead with you, Wayne, is to see if we could put those or start work on those on the afternoon of Friday, the 17th, a week from this coming Friday, where you have a professional development day.
Yes, not a problem.
Okay, so that's what I've reached out to to coordinate with with Park Rowway and getting their installers out. Other items that don't require parts, there's three. One is recleaning the brick on the exterior of the of the gymnasium. We've just been having trouble getting scheduled with the contractor. We're going to move it up a notch. Doesn't seem to be money that's motivating them. We have plenty of that on the guy. So I'm taking it up to my boss and his boss to make sure we can get action to respray that or wash it down. The next one is the gymnasium padding, which I understand there was some discussion back and forth as far as an agreed fix most recently. So I'm leaving that to Corey. I know Corey and Wayne are intimate with with the plan of action there.
So I installed the padding per the what Dan and I discussed at the request of flipping the padding that covered the top of the stage. Wayne has looked at it. I guess Wayne agrees with superintendent that that's the orientation. Now I just need to get down there with the the glue and the fabric tape and then finish the installation. They like the orientation of the pads.
I thought the email I sent was the original modification that we agreed to was just was adding another 12 inches to the top without taking it off the bottom. If I wasn't clear on the email, I apologize.
All right, I thought it was the orientation was accepted. Okay.
Yeah, so we are looking for material there. That'll have to be, we'll have to place an order. It's the turns out to be the same contractor that actually owes us the power wash. So it's, you know, be after them for that.
Hey, just a quick question on this. Right now, the padding that was provided is per plan or was the plan not specific?
No, it was per the plan, but there was a problem with the and forgive me if I'm not totally accurate on this because it was before my time. I kind of got this passed over from Sam that the basketball hoop was installed too close to the stage. And in order to move it, the floor had to be relined. So we had a meeting out there with the superintendent, myself, Mike Brennan, the principal, and it was agreed that just adding an additional 12 inches of padding to extend the the top of the stage covering would be acceptable rather than moving and then relining the entire floor and everything.
All right, so the floor was lined, the lining on the floor was per plan, correct?
That I don't know.
So Dan, you can help maybe, you know, here, because if the lining was at one point and they put the when we see that the alignment between the basketball hoop and the floor was not correct, and the decision was made to to leave it there. I'm just going back and maybe, you know, the pad guy isn't really responsible for this. This is a floor and or installer of the hoop problem, right?
Well, in this circumstance, the hoop installer and the pad guy are the same guy.
Oh.
So that's how that's where he stepped in. Steve June may know the history as to, you know, whether or not the the usually the basketball support brackets go in first, and then the line striping occurs and everything lines up. Something was amiss by some number of inches, whereas rather than move the hoops, I think they moved the line striping to align with the hoops.
What happened? Yeah, what happened was Matt had gone off of the drawings, the contract drawings. He never submitted a submittal to verify the placement of the lines. So that's where it stands.
Okay, so they agreed because the lot. So then they striped, I think, to the basketball hoop, but everything was a little closer to the nose of the proscenium. Okay, the stage. So they carved a deal out where they were going to provide some additional padding. They provided the padding, but it only goes on the face. It doesn't extend on the horizontal portion of the platform or the stage.
That was there. Yeah, the angle on the on the face and the lower section was there. There was add that. Yeah, they were supposed to add to behind the face on the top of the stage.
Okay, so that's
That's all the history.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure because it was so long ago that the I remember the discussions now that the installation of the pad, the original installation of the pad was per the plan. It was just the things that affected that pad and wanting more pad that drove it. Got it. All right, Dan, you were reading on the punch list. Continue, please.
So last item is getting the BMS contractor back to put a circuit tap on and confirm that radon power is on and operational. In other words, it's the BMS portion of the radon fan installation. Just a just a checks and balance, not a checks and balances. It's a monitoring system to make sure that power hasn't gone off to the fans.
Okay, and just a quick follow up on this discussion of of let's BMS HVAC. Where do we stand with the rooms that those couple of rooms that we're still having problems with? Steve June, I think you can weigh in here if you have to. We talked in our last meeting about is the answer to provide a supplemental either, you know, heat in that room because I think we had a cold problem in there. Have we had any motion on that since our last meeting three, four weeks ago?
Now, let me follow up. I apologize. I'll follow up with my mechanical engineer. We did talk about it in person.
Hey, Dan or Wayne, do you have anything more to add on that?
No, that's I think that's one of the one items on the warranty list was just the second list that a bunch of the punch list went over to.
Well, it is. This is going to be one of those chicken egg things because if action errors argument is, hey, we designed, we put the system in as design, it's not that room is still having a problem. You know, they're going to come back and see if you want to add more equipment or supplemental, you know, we're going to have to pay for that, obviously, because that would be a design change. We're going to get into a little loop here soon on this. We want to figure out what the right answer is. But Wayne, how are we doing HVAC wise in? I haven't seen, or maybe you just haven't sent them to me. The usual emails, this is a shoulder time of year where one day we're super hot, the next day we're cold. I know you went from having no students to having students. So the teachers are by themselves. You add, you know, 1,000 little kids running around making heat.
Basically, right now, I have a guy going in in the morning and going through every piece of equipment because we're still finding failures. We're still finding chiller shutting down overnight. We have to reset it and restart it. We're finding different controls that have tripped out, static controls or fan controls. You know, so we're just going in ahead of time and and resetting all that. One of the problems or the biggest problem with that is that there are just so many alarms on this system that we we can't I can't have an email going out because, you know, there's like 200 a day. Every time the temperature in the room goes more than two degrees out of sync, we're getting an alarm. When we really need key alarms, if a piece of equipment shuts down or, you know, if in the in a weekend, if it's the building is down to 50 degrees or something where we need, we have a heating issue, we need those alarms. But I can't have somebody monitoring because there's just so many.
Do you get you get to decide what the what the email parameters are for when an email goes out, or is it every alarm has to be emailed?
Every alarm gets emailed.
I know. I mean, I understand that's what's happening today, but the question is, is that something that's variable? I mean, I've worked with similar systems.
They have to be shut off. Each arm has to be shut off or on. And right now they're all on.
And how about the parameters for that alarm as to when?
I don't know. I don't.
Two degrees to me seems kind of silly. I can see a 10 degree or something like that.
Yeah.
Dan, do you or Steve know any more on this, or is this a JCI proprietary?
The JCI, according to them, it was by specification for what the designer designed.
That's what I recall from the early training on that where I was witness to this to the program and stuff. But to your point, Steve, I think that they are adjustable, that you can, you know, at least change. They may come in as alarms. They may stay red until somebody acknowledges them. But certainly, they can be filtered for which ones send out notifications and what type of notification that can be. That's the small bit that I recall from from the training session that I sat in. But I think to get to the end or move the problem forward is is to get JCI back engaged. I've done that with with getting action error, you know, responsive to to some of these problems that we have out there. And then to bring in SES, you know, to bring in our commissioning agent again and work through what are these operational things that need to be, you know, fixed or, you know, some decisions need to be made as to changing the program.
Yeah, the the thing that sends out the alerts, I mean, if we maybe we dig into the manual or something, you'd find that there's generally those systems have different levels of alerts, those that you can set the email, those that you can't. I've got a JCI, believe it or not, system at work that it's it's a security system, not a BMS system, but excuse me, HVAC system, but I can select what gets emailed and what doesn't. So it's you know, it's probably they bought out Tyco. So who knows? It could be a totally different system. Let's find out what we can do on that because what happens when you get 200 emails, Wayne, is you just don't pay attention to them. And then when we have a real problem, nobody does anything. So also Steve June, since we selected did we in our proposal say it had to be a JCI system? Would that have been in the design or would it have been up to someone to propose a BMS?
No, that would have been in the design itself. There wouldn't be alternates.
Okay, can you can you toss that answer question out to your your engineer and say, hey, what should the variables be for this so we can try to nip this in the butt? All right. Dan, what else do we have on that punch list?
That was the last item. So that's that's your list of seven.
Okay, now that's separate from the warranty items.
That's correct.
All right. So the question that follows with that between you and Corey, I think, Dan, Corey fixes stuff that's broke and you do paperwork. So based on that, when do you anticipate giving me the next bill and the final bill on the Gallup Hill School, assuming that things progress as discussed?
I have I have these some mop up changes to write to the committee. The goal would be to have those paperworks in order prior to our next meeting. And then given a confidence that we should just move forward, then I'll present at the next meeting the closeout values. We'll execute the documents and I'll produce a final document for billing and and what turns out to be the return of all leftover contingencies. A week later.
Wayne needs to say, so he is raising his hand there. And I do recognize that you read me the punch list, not the warranty list. Those are two different things. I think we have some planting still there and some other things that are ongoing for warranty. Is the list that you sent in Lisa that she can forward to the committee contain the warranty items as well?
It does.
Okay, Wayne?
Yes.
You had your hand moving like this.
Oh, no, my daughter came in. My granddaughter came in.
Oh, okay, no problem. All right. All right. So that's Gallup Hill School. I think our goal here is to get the Gallup Hill School closed out so we can begin that process with the state. I think based on the number of items we talked on the list here, we've made some good progress in getting that done. It is said it's taken this long. And so let's move on to the Linyard Middle School. And Wayne, if you want to start there, you sent me some pictures of I'm a retired submariner. I wouldn't have called it flooding, but but it's it was definitely a leak. So if you would go over the Linyard Middle School, specifically the issues with the roof mounted units that are leaking.
Yeah, basically, I had a contractor come in and do a water test. Found a number of issues with the the roof and the rooftop unit. Most of the items with the rooftop units, Chris Rizzi was supposed to have addressed back when I first met with him in late May or June. And, you know, I called it the next rainstorm when it poured in again. And he said, oh, it wasn't supposed to be the following week. And now we're in September and it's still not done. These were, you know, panels, access panels, or where they screwed stuff in on the bottoms, they had openings. Again, those were all identified on the water leak as coming in. They've also got issues with the flashing that was put up on the vibration mounts for those units. They're they're pulled away from the the curbing. At some point, they're going to allow water penetration. I did send Dan those pictures also. And I got about 30 or 40 more if you want them to, Dan. I just picked you sent you over the worst ones. So I don't know where we're going on that. I've got a quote and unless Dan steps in, I'm going to direct my contractor to go ahead and repair them. Seal up the units was 12 or $1,300. I believe my quote was, I don't have that off the top of my head. Wasn't that, you know, far out of whack. But I did ask him, I said, what about the rest of the items? And he hasn't gotten back to me with a quote on, you know, all the other items yet. So that's where we stand on that.
Before you move off the roof leaks there, Dan, is there anything you want to weigh in on that?
First and foremost, it's it's embarrassing, and I appreciate the effort put in by this third party to find these these locations. In due diligence, I have to notify the trade and give them the opportunity to make the correction, which Corey and I have spoken to already as far as notices and getting them out there. If it's not something that can happen, you know, in record time, two, three days from now, then I'm happy to take the the process here to have a third party vendor make the corrections and and then take the funds away from the trade.
All right. So Wayne, that would be, you know, I don't know if it would be the same guy that gave you the quote or not. You worked that out with Dan. But time is the essence because every day and every rainstorm, and as we get into the colder season, we want to they had to put some kind of RTV down or some kind of a compound or epoxy to seal those. We this is the time to do it weather wise, not when it starts getting colder. And so please work with Dan. Let's get that done ASAP. Now that we know what the problem is.
Yep, not a problem.
And LMS, I know we only had a few items left in LMS besides
Yes.
the roof.
Basically, there's been no progress there at all. You know, I would request that the building committee reach out to ONG and have them do everything you can to put Corey over to the middle school project to get them squared away. You know, he did a fantastic job at Gallup Hill. And we need that kind of attention and thorough for a week or 10 days or whatever it's going to take to get the problems at the middle school straightened out.
Well, I was on the impression that Corey was working both school buildings. Is that correct, Dan, or was I incorrect?
He is. He was free to work on both, but the list that we had for LMS was simply that darn ladder that got installed wrong. And then I just off the top of my head, I can remember the the roller shade pulls needing to be fastened. So what we need to do here is get to a meeting of the minds with Wayne again on on what is outstanding as far as warranty.
Yeah, my understanding was only a handful of items. Now, speaking, whether it's warranty or not, where do we stand with the the water hammer, water pressure issue, Groton Utilities and others?
I had the brought in a contractor to change the pressure reducing valves. And so far, since that, we have not had any problems with it.
Okay, was the what was the pressure prior to the change on the gauges and when he took them apart, obviously, he did you keep the parts he took out?
Yes, we had the the ones he took out.
Okay, were they the right specification?
I don't know. I didn't ask him that. He came in with a little bit more substantial valve. Slightly different style. And we've been running consistently at about 60 pounds in the building. Prior, we were up somewhere between 95 to 100, depending on the day.
Okay, do we, again, we don't know when this problem occurred with the when the pressure started getting higher. We don't know because, as you said, those gauges are in place. You don't normally go look at it. It's not like you're taking logs. We don't know when those failed or if they were high pressure from day one.
No, we don't. But we do know that we had problems with the Bradley sinks from the time this second phase of the building opened. And from that point on, and when we finally traced it back to Bradley and we talked to him, they said the higher pressure would definitely do exactly the things we've had. And since we changed them, we've had no problems.
Right, but my point is, we don't know when that pressure spike occurred. It was at some point, you know, down the road. All right. And then the other item is, are we able to get any more information from ever source related to the power, the voltage spikes? Do we have any anything there?
No, no updates, except for the the information that they gave me that day, which basically didn't come from them, according to them, that we should submit for reimbursement because of it.
Right now, based on the comments and the emails I've seen since, I think that since that period where we had the high voltage, that we have seen a market decrease in the That we have seen a market uh, decrease in the number of failing. Um, uh, components in the in the HVAC system and other things in the building, is that correct?
As far as I know, since they made that change, we haven't had a failed VFD.
Okay, so, um, you know, and and Steve June, I think we talked at a previous meeting about what would the impact be on voltage on these, you know? It it could do bad things, I think was the answer we had at the time, but um. You know, it's very difficult to go back and look at failed um. Uh, units in the uh, whether they're the um, the variable um, dampers or any other units. And trying to determine if this was potentially part of the cause. Because we were seeing a high rate of failures more than than normal, and now we're not seeing those failures, so. I don't know if we can ever resolve that issue.
Yeah, I don't know, I can follow up um, with our electrical department. And see if that would affect anything.
I'm reasonably comfortable that they're gonna come back and say something like, yeah, if you put twice the voltage in there, it could be bad. It could break, um, you know, we don't have to pay electrical engineers to know that, but I guess the real, the good news is that they're not failing anymore. Um, and uh, you know, perhaps, I don't know how many of our headaches may have been caused over the last couple of years based on that. If that was a uh, long-term problem. Okay, uh, but that that Leder Middle School list uh, should be extremely small, Wayne, um, if anything else.
Well, the the problem is that you've got a bunch of stuff down there that Chris Rizzi took off, because he just didn't want to deal with. Um. Like the falling out ceiling tiles. Um, that he went, you know, just put a dab of glue on to hold them in place, that it's gonna cause us all kinds of problems later on when we. Go to uh, have to change them or get access to those those areas. Um, the doors that are all stained, the rusty hinges that are still on the doors, this is inside doors too. Not, you know, from the improper screws. Um, so I'd really, if, you know, if uh, Corey can get down here and go through with me. So we can get an accurate list. Um. Best.
One thing we have to think about. What, at what point did they come off the list and what, how did they come off the list when? So if you'll get back with Corey and at least compare those lists of. Um, and while I'm a subject of the middle school, have you had any additional uh, movement on pulling all the state? Um, uh, the the online payment EDO uh, four nine type submissions, so we can know where we stand with the state?
Yeah, I finally did get access to the website, because they just changed it, um, like I told you, um. After they gave me the, the, I got the codes from the superintendent to get in there, they changed their website totally. So I did get the final um, access to the website, which I was playing around with today. So I should be able to get on before the end of the week and pull whatever Marsha needs.
Right, and just get all the data that's in there the best you can downloaded to Marsha, so that we can uh, sit down and figure out our approach with the state. And we'll be ready to do the same here soon, uh, any additional submissions we can do now. To reduce our short-term borrowing until we close this out with the state.
And I'll pull everything at Gallup Hill too, so she has them both, whatever's in there.
All right, Dan, do you or Corey want to address anything further on the Leder Middle School?
No, just that we do want to, you know, put a bow on that list, um, so I think that. You know, I'll touch base with Corey, we'll touch base with Wayne on when he can get down there to, to take a look at it and pull anything back that's uh. You know, that's been recorded, but similar to the Gallup Hill list, everything in some of the history is is on the original punch list. Um, as far as tracking back, um, specifically on the rusty hinges, I know we've, we've replaced some. Um, if there's others that got, you know, that are rusty or got overlooked at the time, then, you know, that's something we want to take care of to. To put a positive pin here.
And just, just as one other thing on the um, on the middle school. Um, we did have a problem um, last week of severe mold and magnesium. Um, we've got contractors in now, uh, it's probably gonna be. A little over twenty thousand dollars to clean this up. Uh, I brought in last week a company that deals in dehumidification and all that kind of stuff. Um, they looked at the situation, pointed out some obvious um. Openings to the outside air, uh, up in the chase going up to the uh, where the piping goes up to the rooftop unit. Uh, that they're concerned about, uh, but they're, I'm waiting for their report to come back, so I can see what they're recommending or what they feel the uh. Uh, cause was.
Um, I'm I'm sure, now you're talking about extra humidity, Wayne, you said you also had some uh, mold in the auditorium?
Auditorium also on the seating, uh, the carpet, the stage, uh, and a little bit on the curtains.
Do we um, run that um, AC system even when there's no students in the school?
Yes.
So it's set now, and Steve June, maybe you can answer this, if not, um, Wayne, uh, Dan, you were there when they were doing the install. We don't have a dehumidification system, we have an air conditioning system, correct?
Correct.
And.
Yes.
I'd have to double check that one for you guys. I know that on one school, there is, on one school, there wasn't.
We very seldom put in a dehumidification system in the schools, very seldom.
Yeah.
There's no dehumidification.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if you guys remember that we're on the committee, when we did the police station, those of you that were were on the committee then, we had a a humidity problem. Although not mold, it was humidity in the police station, and we wound up having to install reheaters in there to force the AC system to become a dehumidification system. My question on this one, and we're having a similar problem at um, at work for two reasons. One, we had. A a s- a lower heat load in spaces than the system was designed for, so the AC system didn't run very often. Um, coupled with the outside air being set to a higher than normal due to COVID. Um, there was, there was a lot of direction put out to open to maximum outside air during the COVID timeframe. And I believe we implemented that, did we not?
We did implement it, and then I asked JCI multiple times if they implemented it. And they originally said yes, and then said, no, no, we can't do that, there's no way to do that.
I'd be curious to see what that setting is, and and the reason I say that is without. When the students weren't in the school at the time, there's not much of a heat load going on in there, I mean, it's it's whatever it is, that coupled with um. If we are bringing in extra outside air, uh, will lead to, we had the same problem with at work, and we had to install extra dehumidification systems. Because the computers that were in there were much, much um, uh, better for heat production than the ones that system was designed for. Because computers don't put out as much heat as they used to put out in some cases. Um, that coupled with um, opening up the AC system to bring in the maximum amount of outside air. Well, we're dumping in eighty-five, ninety percent humid air into the room from the outside, and it's just not. Hot enough in there for it to cycle out all that humidity. So I'd be curious to say, um, Steve June, is this the first you've heard about mold in LMS?
Yes, yes.
All right, so this is something we need to go back uh, and talk to the, granted, if you have a, you know, some holes around a pipe. Aren't gonna bring in a tremendous amount of moisture unless it's water coming in that, you know. You know, it's just a little bit of humid air coming in, I can't see how that's gonna happen, but I'd like to get the the ME, MEP engineer of records thought on this. As to. You know, what's potentially going on here before we go too far down this path, because uh, are you seeing a similar problem in uh, Gallup Hill?
No.
All right, so.
Um, this is all on the, the steel decking, all the steel support work on the roof. Um, not on the duck work on the roof. Uh, underneath the uh, bleachers, the wood decking under the bleachers. Um, and a little bit around the base edge on the wall, on the concrete wall.
Yeah, I'm looking at that steel up there being something as far as, you know, if water's gonna condense on there. Um, you know, those kinds of things ma- all make sense, but um, I. You know, I'd like to get the engineer of record that designed that system, tell them specifically, you can put an email back to Steve June as to specifically where the mold problems were. Uh, and that we can take a look at that and and look at those specific areas. Um, because in the gym, the, it should be much hotter up at the top, right?
Right.
And uh, you know, cooler down at the bottom, but let him know where the, uh, specifically, and we'll draw where the mold is. Give it a hand sketch so that we can take a look at that and go back and say, okay, well, is there something unique to the gym? That maybe the gym, you know, those large open spaces may need something a little bit different there. I realize it would be hard to retrofit that into those spaces, but let's take a look at what's going on there.
It was also very, very clear where any areas that were not in contact with the roof. Did not receive mold. So if you look over the bleachers, um, the area above those bleachers is a attic space where we're putting in that. Climb up uh, the the steering and stuff. Um, absolutely no mold, there was a definitive line that went right down that line, everything that was above that space had nothing. Uh, areas that had uh, solid attachments to the um. Structure like the curbing, you could see the square of the curbing from the AC unit. Uh, with absolutely nothing on it, that five or six inch, whatever that, you know, curbing was made of.
Definitely. You know, heat conduction issue along with humidity, um, and that kind of information can really help Marty.
Yep.
With that, to to look at elements that are causing that.
Yep.
And again, there's gotta be a setting somewhere in that BMS that talks about how much outside air we're bringing in. And I realize that we're caught between this work harder system, bringing more potentially humid air. Uh, you know, against COVID, so you gotta figure that piece out.
Yep.
But instead of just cleaning up the mold and us going out, we really want to look at the problem and say, okay, what's causing this? We never had this problem before we had air conditioning in there, ever.
Right.
But keep in mind that our temperature differential between the inside and the outside of the envelope. Uh. Would not have been as extreme as it is, because we weren't air conditioning the space.
Right.
Um, so with air conditioning, you get extra work and problems, so. Uh, but you get a more comfortable room, apparently. So if you can send that off to Steve June and. Dan and Corey on that as well, and maybe we can come up with some answers. Rather than just clean it up and, but you have a good knowing of where it's at, even if it's been cleaned up. At least uh, Marty can uh, can look at that and, and you know, Scratch has had a little couple of good engineering answer.
Yep, no, that's fine, uh, gladly do that, that's not a problem.
All right, looking at, looking at the um, uh. The list of who is online, I still don't see uh, Steve Munger here, so this tells me that we don't have a quorum, but we'll do what we can with the rest of the agenda. Anything else on Leder Middle School?
No.
All right, um, so at this point here, um, the items for payment of bills to. Uh, this would be items seven point six, seven point seven. Uh, those are, well, first of all, seven point six is to pay SES on their final bill, we'll uh, table that to our next meeting.
Hey, hey, Steve?
Yes.
Yeah, Gary's on, a little bit late, but I'm here.
Yeah, we still don't have a quorum.
Okay, all right, I'll be quiet.
Thanks for joining.
Yeah, we need, we needed Steve Munger for that forum, but thank you, Gary. Uh, make sure I got here, we got Steve, we have Gary.
You.
We have Jerry.
Three.
That's three, all right, my math says that's not a forum, all right. Um, uh, seven point six, we'll table that, uh, seven point seven is just moving money to pay the bill. Uh, uh, for the uh, newspaper. It's amazing how much it costs to put an ad in the uh, in the newspaper. Uh. Same thing for seven point eight, uh, those are both the uh, newspaper ads, correctly?
Yes.
All right, and those are just reimbursement within the town, so we can let those weigh the uh, vote of a choice, actually. Uh, so, Patrick Sully, associate Steve June, we'll have to wait till next meeting to vote on those for you guys. Um, and I just want at least be able to discuss the um, uh, we're gonna have to have the entire discussion again at our next meeting. Um, Wayne, before we get too far into number eight on the BMS, I, there's two things. One, I know you want to get this work done before it gets uh, cold.
Mm-hmm.
How long can we go? Um, I'm looking at the calendar right now, uh, today's the seventh of September. Um, if we were to meet on the twenty-first, um, would that still support the work?
I think so. They're ready to jump right on it.
I'm sorry, make make that the twentieth, that would be a Monday.
That's fine.
Lisa, is that an issue, the twentieth a Monday?
I can do the twentieth.
All right, and we'll please canvas the um, committee and see if we can get a quorum for the twentieth. Uh, and that'll allow us to um, to vote on uh, paying some bills, but more importantly, number eight, number nine here. Um, number nine doesn't really have a, you know, a time fuse, but number eight, the BMS for Gales Ferry School. Uh, I did notice that in the, in the, what you submitted here, uh, the first, yeah. Nope, somebody has said, okay, uh, the first attachment, the uh, BMS bid results for Gales Ferry has all the bids, it looked like we had, what, six bids?
Gales Ferry, we had four.
Uh, it looked like there were more than four in there, but I, and ABS, right?
Yeah, ABS, um, BT Lindsay, um, and I don't have it in front of me, but there were two other ones.
Uh, there's Connecticut Controls Corp.
Yep.
And then I had, um.
And then Honeywell.
Uh, well, there's Environmental Systems Corp.
Yeah, and then Honeywell.
Right, but the first one at the beginning was the um.
ABS.
Yeah, I'm opening this up again, um. Well, I'm mixing up the crossover numbers, I'm sorry. All right, so you 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 did have four, we met the requirements for there. Um, but I did notice that the second one was an email where you asked somebody about the different controllers.
Yeah, the, what I had sent you was. When I, we did the air conditioning in the. Ag science part of the middle school, uh, the high school. Um. We tied that into the existing B- BMS system, which was an Allerton system. And they had to go out, which caused the bid to go up when we added that function tied into the BMS. Uh, by ten or fifteen thousand dollars, because. Um, Allerton is a proprietary system, and they had a only one vendor that they could bring in to do that work. Um, so when they ABS bid the Allerton system, it caused me to question it. So what I did was, I went on to the website. And they are the sole vendor for Allerton for Connecticut and Southern Mass. The next one is up north of Boston or in Long Island. Um, so they claim that they're not a proprietary system. Uh, but then I did reach out to tradesman who has done some work for us on um, the chillers and stuff. And asked them, and that was the results of the email was from tradesman saying, yeah, they are proprietary system.
Yeah, but whether they're proprietary or not, I guess the issue I have here is that we specifically stated in our. Um, in our uh, request for proposals, a Honeywell Niagara programmable controller system.
Correct, and we also put in there that they could not bid a proprietary system.
Right, but 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 my point is that we we specifically told people, and three of the bidder, well, two of the bidders. In this case, Connecticut Controls and Honeywell Direct each bid um, a Honeywell system.
Yes, so did BT Lindsay, all three of them.
Right, now BT Lindsay, I can't tell, uh, because the only thing attached here is their bid, the price, is there a package that goes with that as well?
Yeah, there's a description, didn't I send that? I thought there was a description.
There's some blank pages that, there's a page that just says, um. Uh, maybe some things were two-sided and only got one, I can't tell for sure, but you can double check.
I'll I'll resend that out, since we can't take action on tonight anyway, but yeah, there's a.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, Lindsay is Connecticut Controls.
Yes, okay, yes.
Looked like two different companies, it's the same bid, okay?
Yeah, BT Lindsay is using Connecticut Controls to do the job.
Understand, that's part of his package.
Yes.
All right, well, like I said, in this case here, um, the guy who bid the Allerton system did not uh, meet the town's requirement.
Correct.
And uh, so we have a um, you know, he bid a different system. So, you know, perhaps if somebody, you know, it seems like ABS did not um. Uh, answer the mail on what we asked for.
Correct.
And if Lindsay is not separate, do we really only have three bids then?
We have, well, we have four, but one of them didn't qualify because it wasn't part of the package.
We didn't, didn't come, right. We have ABS.
ABS.
We have Lindsay.
Yes, Honeywell, and and there's E. Well, yes, yes, Connecticut.
Right, but Connecticut Controls is in fact, um, the email address is Lindsay, so I got confused, okay. So ESC is using. I get a little confused on this one, but it does look like we have four bids, three of which are for Honeywell.
Yes, and one for Allerton.
Right, so um, at that point there, you know, again, if they're all in order, we could go with the lowest bidder. But we would not go with the lowest bidder if the lowest bidder was not a Honeywell Niagara system, because it's not fair to the other bidders.
Correct.
Uh, in that case, so uh, if we can have that ready for our next meeting, hopefully we can vote on that um, in two weeks. Uh, or just under two weeks, and we can move that forward. uh, or just under two weeks, and we can move that forward. Um, the crossover bids um that are there, a lot of those, um and, you know, going through those, trying to determine the um the big question I have is if I recall, you had indicated that to get these things up on the roof, we're going to need a crane.
No, they come in pieces, so we will be able to take them up on the um, the man lifts that you guys purchased for the two buildings.
Right.
So that, that's not a problem getting this up there.
All right, so you can use them outside to do that?
Yes, yeah.
All right, so the, the delivery is free to drop them at the building in these cases.
Correct.
All right, and the um, granted, some of these are manufactured pieces and things, uh, clearly there's one bid that's much lower than the others. Uh, the upside company?
Yep, and I'm, I have some concerns there because um, again, they did not bid this per the specifications. The specifications required that they have um feet or pads underneath that will not damage the roof. Um, and these are simply a square piece of steel um, that they're going to set down on the roof. So we would have to find something else to put underneath these or adapt them.
And do we know if all the others have that underneath them?
Well, I did check with the three lowest bidders, the, the thirty-three, the forty and the forty-six, and they all do.
Okay, if you can put together a summary sheet for these bids as to um uh, we did not meet, so we can add that to the package for our next meeting, that'll be useful.
Absolutely, not a problem.
And um, just a quick question back on the, on the BMS bids. I was looking for the paperwork right before the meeting and tearing through my stuff trying to find it. Do you remember what the uh, the amount was that the town council allocated for the uh BMS?
One fifteen.
Yeah, um, and it, it looks to me like um, some of them are, uh, they're all above that.
Well, the, the BT Lindsay is right at one fifteen, the others are one forty-six and one thirty-six, I believe.
Yeah, it is one fifteen, exactly. Um, and that's kind of interesting that, um, you know, hey, it's public record as to how much money he's putting in account, so.
Those are the ones that did the quote and came in and, and evaluated the system and did the design.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Well, the other company did too because they said, well, they at least came to the meeting, um, first, the first guy, ABS.
Yep.
And uh, now his concern there about some of those components that we don't know the status of, where he um in that first quote, he said during the walkthrough, his review that the existing communications was inoperable. There's no way to know if the existing controllers or existing FDU damper actuators are working. Is that concern that he have affect all the bids or is it unique to his?
That is unique to his, and at this point, there's no information that we have that they're not operating. Because even if it's are operating, it's the main controllers that are controlling what's going into that room and uh the fluctuations within that room.
All right, uh, and the reason I bring that up is if you look at the um, we look at the scope of the work and things, we could find ourselves, if we took the bid at one fifteen exactly at the amount, we could find ourselves where um uh, any, you know, contingencies that come up during that um could put us over the amount of money we have allocated, so um, I don't know what the plan would be in that case, um, but we don't have uh, one, delaying it is going to wind up costing us more. Um, and the uh, we want to get this thing going, so in the event we did, not to have something, we ran out of money.
Yeah, I will say that they did spend almost three full days in there testing the parts and, you know, the communication and everything else. And they were the, of the opinion based on that, that the only thing that had to be changed were the controllers and they, in the main rooms.
Yeah, I felt that their, their, their bid, the way they wrote it up was, was, was very, very well done.
Yeah.
So um all right, um, so if you can just have those ready to go and you said, have that meeting on the twentieth, that'd be wonderful, be able to take care of that. Item ten on the agenda, high school track and field, I mentioned already in the information, the uh vote tomorrow from the uh, on the town council. I think what they're going to do is, they, everyone agreed by the way, but the, you know, there was some discussion back and forth on the scoreboard. Now we have a multi-use, we should have a better scoreboard, that was great. The fence, everybody in the town drives by it, you know, the scoreboard's only on so many hours a week. Everybody drives by the fence, everybody agreed it should be replaced. There was concerns about the fence being damaged by people climbing over it, and that's why it looks the way it is. I did suggest we could put up razor wire, uh, that would stop people from climbing the fence. That did not go over well with finance, so I doubt the town council will adopt that. Um, but the fact of the matter is that, you know, the plastic coated fence would be better. I did explain that our bids on this are old and it may cost more now. Um, and I did point out that the PMBC doesn't decide what projects need to be done. Uh, what we do is we execute projects that are given to us by the town council. Um, based on the structure of the track and field project that was not in the uh, core base of that project, and there was no time constraint on getting it done while something was open. Um, and so the finance committee, and I believe the town council will understand our actions. So next, uh, number eleven, the summer projects, the summer's over effective Labor Day, I guess. So Wayne, where do we stand on the closeout of the summer projects?
Okay, um, done the summer projects, we had the uh rooms at uh the high school. I'm putting together the final um finance end of it. We should be within the budget, I'm not expecting to go over. Uh, it's going to be very close. We did end up with uh, a few unexpected concerns down in there. Um, but uh, we ended up doing eleven rooms total. Uh, one of them was a sewing room, which was much more in-depth than uh what we had, we would normally do in a classroom. Um, so those are uh well on, they're finished basically. Uh, so we'll be moving, I'll have a final uh documentation on that and the final cost for you at the next meeting. The um LHS restrooms, um, there's still a touch to be finished on those. Um, I could not get, when we do the new tile floors, uh, we have to put a ring in to, for the drains so that it comes up level with the new tile. Um, those are still on back order, so we're having problems getting those and still a few weeks out. So the, the rooms are open, they're usable. Um, there's just a section of about maybe a ten-inch square that does not have the new tile yet. In both the uh boys and girls room. Uh, I did have to pull the mason off because we did have an emergency repair at Juliet Long. Uh, we were changing the partitions in two restrooms there, we pulled it out, the uh tile floor buckled in the girls room, so I had to pull him off of that, so we did not get the two um varsity, or not varsity, faculty restrooms done in that uh wing in the high school. So he's working on those now, so they should be finished in another week or ten days. I think that's pretty much it for the two summer projects.
Excellent. All right, thank you, Ed, with your work on roofing projects, get the uh, the EDO uh four nine forms.
Yep.
You get those on track for replacement uh next year.
Yep, yep, I'd like to get those in, hopefully we can get approval fairly quickly. Um, would be nice to be able to get bids out in, you know, January, February before uh a bunch of them come out and we might get some better pricing.
Okay, all right, well, uh, that's all I have for today. Is there anybody else who has anything else they would like to uh add to the agenda or to uh discuss?
Steve, we, we skipped over seven point three on the warranty letter that was issued by Professional Painting on Ledger.
Thank you uh very much, Dan. Uh, for those of you um that don't have your agenda open in front of you, uh, there's a letter dated nineteen July twenty twenty-one. Um, it's actually signed and notarized uh, from Professional Painting. Uh, Wayne, um, I think you probably sent this. Um, just let us know what's going on. It looks like we have one, two, three, four summers um uh, into the future from now, uh, but they've agreed to uh take care of defects and uh, in materials and workmanship.
Uh, yep, um, they didn't come back this summer and take care of it, and we've got peeling paint on the walls.
Did we ask them to?
Uh, I'm, no, we didn't. Um, I didn't have the letter to know whether that was required or they were just coming in to take care of it. Um, so we just got that.
Okay, uh, I would imagine that if you call them now um, that they would probably come out and do, and uh, and touch up now because they'll just have to do it later, so.
Yep, no, that's fine.
I'd feel free to reach out to them if you would.
Yep.
All right, anything else to add on that, or Dan, did you want to add anything on that since you brought it up?
Well, the only reason was, uh, it was, this is a document that now guarantees that they'll come out for the next, you know, four more seasons plus um this year. And I was withholding from them their final release of retainage. So it was the language of the letter and the understanding that uh, that we had from our field meet some months ago now. That, you know, that this letter matches what we talked about. And if that's the case, if anyone takes exception to releasing their retainage.
Nope, that makes sense. You don't need us to vote on that because that's no N G action once we closed out, so.
Yep, no, as long as this language serves, serves the intent there. And certainly, uh, you know, Bill, Bill's team over it, Professional Painting will come out, Wayne.
Okay.
No problem.
I'll reach out to him.
Okay, um, a- again, uh, you know, Pete's not with us tonight because his wife Gail passed away, so if you happen to uh know Pete, um, or whatever, please uh um, you know, keep me in your thoughts and prayers, and uh with that, I move that we adjourn. Wait, I can't vote, we're just adjourned, nevermind.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody. We'll see you on the twentieth, provided we can all, by the way, while you're on the phone here, is there anyone who can't make it on the twentieth?
What?
Is there anyone who cannot make it on the twentieth?
Oh.
Nope, I can make it.
All right, hearing none there, uh, if you could just reach out to um Kate, Steve Munger and
Kate, Steve and Pete.
Yeah, and then we can go from there.
Okay.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you, have a good night.
Uh, should have gone that way.